Meeting's order. We'll have a roll call. We're all here, probably don't have to have a roll call. Okay. Additions to the agenda?
There are two additions to the agenda. One under consent agenda as far as an athletic assignment and one just to talk forward a little bit about wasting program that's in my mind.
Okay. With additions, do we have a motion to add to the agenda?
Hello?
A move by Cheryl, second by...
Yep.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Passed. Let's see, the next thing we have then would be, I don't have any problems, or no, even though we're proud of everybody in the school system, do we have anybody for public comment? Do you want to speak?
Dr. Jerry.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we don't have any public comment. Approval correct minutes from the January 25th, 2014 regular board meeting. We have a motion to approve. A move by Deb.
Second.
Second by Gala. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say no. Passed. We have nothing, yeah, we have one item then.
Consent agenda.
In the consent agenda, review and consider approval of the following athletic assignment for the 2013-14 school year, assistant golf coach Jay Thompson.
Max, do you think that on that?
Use the qualified app.
Do you have any numbers for that this year? I mean, for what golf was kind of coming in.
Yeah, the thing is, is even though our numbers aren't super high, we have a girls' golf meet and a boys' golf meet at the same time, so we can't...
Yep.
Do any different really.
Just changing.
Yeah.
Remember we add?
Yep.
Yes.
Did you post this, did you post this place in?
Correct, yeah.
Was posted in Thompson correctly. Was he the only applicant by any chance? He was. Okay, just asking.
Do we have a...
A motion to approve.
A motion by Mark to approve.
Second.
Second by Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Passed. Then we have business. Review the district goals for 2013-14 school year.
As if you read in the addendum, certainly this is something that I wish I would have brought earlier. One of the things that I've been trying to do is to do the strategic planning, that's been part of my goals for last year, I didn't get to it last year, I'm not sure if I'm gonna get it to this year until the end of the year, but I kind of put off the goals with the hope that I would get through the whole process, so we established the goals with the community, go through the whole strategic planning piece. I know this is late and I do apologize to the board and the community for that, but it just, I'm not gonna get to the strategic planning right now and I did want to bring more forward and update. These are the same goals, I think they're solid goals that we went through last year, there are no changes on this for this year as we go through the strategic planning, either at the end of this year or at the start of next year over the summer, and certainly we will change these, it may change the whole format, it may change completely, but for now I felt the need to bring them forward. And I've done a very good job, again, my apologies. Be better once I get that strategic plan done and we move forward, but that was my intent, I just didn't get to it.
When you get done with the strategic plan and we have a plan going forward, I'm assuming some of this within, look for some of these type of things. That we're writing, just starting on getting that.
The strategic planning will look at all aspects of the district, both the curricular and academic area, or if you look at our activity area, could look at our facility, could look at all of that, and what we do include technology, we include all the areas of the district really, and it defines what we want to be and where we want to go as a district. So all of that would be included in the strategic planning process. Technically, you know, we'd be kind of a year ahead, it's just ending the plan, I think it ends in 2014 or 2015, so we're, our timing is good for that, but it is, it is right to start that process and do it again.
So what do you need here?
I think at this time, I think certainly I go through the same thing that we did, it's the same goals as last year, I'll need, eventually need an approval, typically we will look at it, bring it up for discussion, during the second time we can certainly change or add anything. I do believe that these goals are appropriate, I think they fit, we've been following these things, they all do it, student achievement with communication with the district. We have started to set baselines and we brought some of those forward with the board as far as academics and what our test scores are. I do think we need to do a better job again collecting the baselines, doing more surveys. We started surveys with the students last year, this will be the second year for the surveys, for instance, I'd like to do one with the staff this year to see where they're at, and hopefully get, also get to the community and see where they're at. Well, I should say, community, whether we'll get to that, for sure the parents this year, so I'd like to get the staff and the parents with a survey this year to start collecting baseline that we can start looking at every year with that. So that's, we start looking at those types of baselines over years, it gives you a better indication. One year doesn't necessarily give you the information you need because it could either be a high year or it could be a low year depending on how things are going. So I think as we collect years of data or even a few years of data, it will become more beneficial to the district on what's truly going on as far as the satisfaction of the community and the parents and the staff and the students.
So this will be our first reading? Is this available on the website for people to look at?
I believe it is, I think, yep, last year's is, so what we would do is just update it, the only thing that's really changed in this document is the year.
And under two D successfully passed the operational referendum in the fall of 2012?
I would drop that one.
That's the only thing that jumped out at.
Yep, I would be glad to drop that one.
Jay, do we have any public comment on this? Okay, no public comments, should we...
The doghouse news on the webpage, with our new format, do we still have that even? So you might want to drop that. We still have the information there, we just don't call it that anymore, you don't have that sort of thing.
Yeah, and we have done some things along those lines, again, it's about bringing more to the board and I need to start doing that where the things that we've changed, the things we haven't changed, Matt has revamped the whole website, so that has certainly changed from everything, might be worth at least getting input from the parents when we surveyed them to see how they like it or even the community members on that, so need to do a better job in collecting the information and sharing it with the board and the community.
Okay, anything else on this? Nothing else, we could move to number two then.
Well, it appears like this is just gonna be a DME going from one thing to the board and saying, you know, wish I had done more on this too. Really should have gotten my goals off the board at the start of the year or during the summer, at these part, I do have a plan now for correcting this, but my goals should have come to you much sooner. They are built off of last year's and for the most part, they are the same, I, you know, as far as financial competencies, I'm still working on that. I'll be working on that, to tell you the truth, I'll probably be a goal mine until the day I retire, because there's a lot to learn in that area and I just have a lot of work. As far as facility, you know, one of the new ones is number two, is just working with the community and the facility, meaning to have the discussion about, do we want to do a project, don't we want to do a project, what are the needs, those types of things. That will certainly work into the strategic planning as we do that too, so that would be a new one. Again, increase student achievement, that will be there every year in some form. I think that we'd make really good gains, but it's about continuing to make really good gains as we move forward. The staff can, and the administrators can be nothing but proud on what they've done in that area so far and really, they are the ones that do that. I mean, they, it's the work of the teachers and the staff in the classroom where I believe it causes the gains to occur. Communication throughout the school, continue to work on that, we've changed the website, but I don't think you'll ever get to the point where you can give the community too much information, so that will continue to be a goal. The Affordable Healthcare Act is continuing to be a goal, it will be a goal for the next few years because they keep changing things. So it'll be an adventure, you know, every year they add something new or they change something new or they, it's just been the most interesting thing. I don't know where it's gonna end up, but it will continue to be a goal because we need to know what's going on in that particular area. The strategic plan, we've already talked about that, I'm looking towards that either towards the end of this year or the start of next year for sure, to start that planning process. We updated some policies, we need to continue to do that, again, that will be a goal that I would guess we'll remain on there. I don't think we'll ever catch up because every time one goal gets caught up or policy gets caught up, then MSBA sends out another model policy that we need to look at, or something else pops up that's new, e-cigarettes are an example of that. It was the one piece that we changed because it needed to be changed at the time. Worked with baseball association for the completion of the stadium project, that was another addition just because we need to do that. I'm certainly willing to look at anything, I talked with the board chair a little bit about my evaluation and I think he's come up with a timeline on where we're gonna get that out. What I'd like to do in the future is that two weeks, within two weeks of that evaluation, that I then come out with my new goals for the next year, so that we won't run into this piece again where I'm so late with these to the board. And I think if we do that, then within two weeks of my eval, I'll come out, bring to the board my new goals for the fall of next year, and that way they'll be up to date as we go into summer and go into the next year. So again, this is the first reading, I think certainly take a look at it, any suggestions, changes, please bring them or send me an email and I'll make those changes, bring it forward to the next board meeting.
Any further discussion, wants to board? Anything from the public? If not, that's, this will be the first reading, we'll go to number three, review information on integration.
Just be aware of the board, this is a new piece that Haynesville has qualified for. We've never been able to collect integration money from the state. What has happened is that, and that's because I believe Osakis was, or Long Prairie Gray Eagle was the isolated district, you have an isolated district in regards to diversity and they've included now a green reduced as a diversity piece, while Melrose has become the new isolated district. So any district that is adjacent to Melrose now can apply for integration funding from the state. For us, it's about $32,000. Now, we can't supplant anything, so if we're already doing some projects, I can't add or start to pay for the ones that we're already doing. The state won't allow us to do that, but talking with the two principals, what we've come up with is a couple of things that we're really interested in looking at. One is developing a peer mentoring program for our middle school, high school kids where their actual peers help them at homework and other things. Could be just helping them academically, could be explaining how you study for a test, any type of things, but it would be their own peers helping with that. We'd have to hire a staff member to monitor that and to run it, but that all falls within the timeframe of this. We have to have some things that are between districts, all right? In other words, if they have a cultural diversity day, transportation can be provided to take some of our students there and participate in that. We also have to offer a piece, and Lori and I are developing that now, where we would invite any of the districts within the collaborative to be able to come to Melrose or it's Haynesville, could include Melrose, Long Prairie Gray Eagle, Albany Sock Center, Osakis, and I think Long Prairie Gray Eagle are all part of this collaborative, so we would invite all those schools to come to us. In the elementary piece, they're looking at helping to do some additional activities for our summer school program that we haven't been able to do before. It doesn't provide for transportation, but it would be able to even pay for the cost of the tickets and some of the other activities that we might provide for those students during the summer. It's been kind of a whirlwind, it's come up and I've been aware of it for a while, but the state has been very slow, quite frankly, in telling us what the requirements are, giving us the paperwork, what do we need to do, so as we speak, I am working on this plan. I do not expect that the board will have a lot of opportunity to look at the plan before the night of the 25th. It depends on how I get things done and like I said, it's been a rush for me just to try to figure out what we have to do. One of the districts who's already been doing this has a plan kind of developed and I'm trying to pattern mine off of theirs so that it will pass. I think it's a good deal for the district, but I am going to have to get board approval on the 25th of March, that's how tight this deadline is. But I haven't had a lot of notice to be able to bring this to the board sooner, but I do believe if we're, if we're able to bring 32,000 into the district, that's going to help our students, and it's not gonna cost our district any additional funds, and particularly with, we're around with our own budget, I believe it's something that we should take a serious look at, and I will ask for approval, but we'll go through the whole plan on the 25th, so although you may not have a lot of time to look at it, unless I get done by Friday or at least beginning of next week, maybe that we'll just need to take a little time on the 25th, so that you clearly understand the whole, whole plan at that particular time. But I'll need a board that night, that's how tight the deadlines are. And that's with an extension that the state gave you. Otherwise, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to play with.
Okay. Any comments from the public, any comments from the board? If not, let's move on to informational reports.
Uh, we do have a little...
Post, can we?
Yep.
On our business. Review and consider approval to participate in the Microsoft licensing program.
One of the things that we found out, and Mark, you were also at that particular technology, is that Microsoft is no longer going to support anything below XP, and our computers are going to have XP or below them right now. It's been a financial piece, for one thing, if we were to just update some of the computers we needed, it'd be over $5,000 for us, update the operating system plus the Word system. If we don't figure out how to deal with this, we are susceptible to any kind of viruses and any kind of tax on our systems because Microsoft will no longer support protecting those particular systems. But they do have a new program, it's Microsoft licensing program, which allows us to update all of our computers for the cost of $3,737. Believe me, I would not be bringing this board as tight as our budget is this year, but their protection ends in April, and it's going to take us a while to update all our machines even once we purchase this agreement from them. It is an annual cost, but there's a lot more costs associated if we go machine by machine and buy licenses and update our operating system. Even with this thing, we have some machines that are so old that this won't help, primarily in the elementary because, you know, the way is, is that we buy new machines and it's a trickle down effect. Once we do our next technology lease, then we'll probably have machines that it will be able to update. This particular piece will update our operating system and the Microsoft piece of that. So we really do get quite a bit for that, so we'll keep current in both the operating system and our licensing making, it depends how many computers we have. So it is a pretty good deal and I believe it also provides, I think it costed $20, the students went to buy or purchase the Microsoft works, for 20 bucks they can do that, so there's another benefit even to the students themselves to be able to purchase that particular software, but we talked about an awful lot of options at our technology committee, we all believe that this is the best option to go with right now.
This would upgrade our operating systems in those XP and older?
It will, for the ones that are able to be updated. Like I said, in the elementary school, we have some that won't be able to handle the new operating systems, they just don't have enough power to be able to do that. For those machines, quite frankly, we're gonna look at, part of them are in the teachers' rooms themselves, part of them are one lab in the room, if that's correct, I believe, Dave. We may not be able to use those machines because again, if you leave them online, they're gonna be susceptible to attacks. And so we may be, we're looking at other things in the technology committee to see if we need to move our lease piece further ahead or faster than what we've been doing it, but...
How many, how many computers are retired from the lab?
As far as the ones that, again...
The ones that won't, that are beyond?
There are about, I think, 30.
35 to 40.
40, yep.
At elementary.
Wow.
And I mean, that is part of the trouble of technology, as a district, we're never gonna always be able to afford the biggest investment.
Yeah, but 35 to 40 that can't have one upgrade on XP.
Right, correct.
That won't be able to be upgraded.
Correct. The plan right now is to disable, remove the computers that are in the classrooms, that are not the teacher's computer, if they have one in there that they're using for other things, we're gonna take those out first week of April.
If, if we had some donated computers that were XP or possibly more, would the school be able to take those?
I think I would look at, when I, when I found, when we've done that in the past, at least in previous places I've been, and had them work real well. I certainly think if there are some, I think if you get that to me, we can talk about it in our technology committee and to determine whether it's a good thing, we just need to make sure that everything works well. You know, and sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't, so we have to be very careful about that, it sounds great, but in my past experience when I've done that, we end up spending the money to dispose of the computers because they don't work well enough to be able to do it. I wish it was different, but it's not. So, but, you know, I think in our technology committee, it's certainly a discussion about where we need to be and that falls into the strategic planning also, where do we want to be? You know, and that includes in the area of technology, where do we want our kids to be? The change is so fast, but we also need to prepare our students for the real world once they get out of, out of school and move into college. I think the move that we made to Google has been a great, quite frankly, the students have done it pretty well. You know, we're still training staff, you know, that are struggling with some of that, but I think some of those kinds of moves are bringing us to where they need to be in regards to technology, but right now the hardware is, it's the hardware and we're , you worry about that.
Do we know what the total number of computers we have there?
Oh, I can certainly say that word off the top of my head.
350, 400?
It's about 350.
350 computers in the district?
Around there.
So we got about 10% that are becoming obsolete.
Yeah, and we do, we are starting to bring iPads in, I don't, did you include those? John, I think we're on 400 probably with the iPads and stuff, and those are relative, you know, we're buying, we're purchasing, purchasing some iPads and some Chromebooks as we can, you know, we budgeted that into our five-year capital plan. But again, that takes money out of the capital plan and something else we can't do, so certainly technology is something we're gonna have to at least discuss and see where that discussion leads us.
Okay, any further discussion? Questions? Questions from the public? Okay, our elementary school principal, you're on deck.
If you give us a motion, that's okay with the board, I haven't asked for a motion.
Oh, the motion to approve that?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion? I have a motion by Mark, second by...
I'll second.
David? In further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say no. Passed. Okay, we're ready for you.
All right, well, and at a whole lot this month, we are in the, doing our March community food drive, and we have a different activity that we're doing each week, and if you go by the benches in the, by the district office, you'll see a whole pile of food already, and so it's going really well, and our, our staff and students really take a lot of pride into that, so it's been a really good thing. Committees, we have our social studies committee and our PE committee that are meeting and we're working on budgets and looking at standards and things that we need, and hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have that kind of finalized and be able to get a budget to Bob so that we can start working on that for next year. On a kind of a fun note, on Thursday this week, we have, we'll have a gym full of inflatables, the big slides and things like that to celebrate the chip shop fundraiser, it was part of the deal for the, it said no cost to Austin, so our fire teachers have scheduled that for everybody in the school throughout the day, and each student who sold eight items or more, which I will need to adjust next year, gets a chance to dunk me in like this shower thing, and there's like 115 students, so we'll adjust that next year, so...
That water's gonna come out of a fire right right there?
It comes out of the shower and it gets me wet, and so I have to do it six different times throughout the day, so Thursday I probably won't be too available, so anyway, but that's about all I have, otherwise we're just getting ready for MCA testing.
Will the videos be on the website?
Um, well, I didn't tell him that, so he probably doesn't know.
He's taking notes right now.
Any other, any questions for me?
I think, it's not accurate, I think the students do pretty well this year with the chip shop.
Yeah, we did, we did very well, yeah.
Lori will be presenting at the next board meeting, there is somebody coming in that she's bringing in for a presentation, so she'll give her, her update at the next meeting.
Okay. Next then will be the community, community education report.
Okay. I'll hand out my spring brochure, it's new since my last year, for it. We've got quite a few new activities in there and programs, just a reminder that the talent showcase is April 6th at 4:00 p.m., that's our big annual fundraiser for the auditory equipment and program fund. Our school age childcare planning is progressing well, we have an active advisory group of parents, we've identified some model programs to start with that we're building from, so that's continued to go. The fitness center is doing well, our visits are up from last year at this time, I think over 1,000 visits, and we're having good year there too, so, any questions?
So you're up over 1,000 visits, what percentage is that?
Um...
Do you suppose we have a 10% gain or a 5% gain?
No, I'd be probably, well, between 2% to 5% probably, so, yeah.
You answered mine, that's the one I get the most questions on, if you guys are first really gonna do the school age daycare.
Yeah, we're taking it very seriously, we're really trying to do it well and do it right, so we, like I said, we've identified some model programs and with that group and we are, we've identified our top five programs that we want to visit as a group too, so we'll start scheduling those also.
Thank you. Okay. Next we have our activities coordinator's report.
Well, we've now finished all of our winter sports onto the spring sport stuff, so just dealing with the end of the season things, inventory and paying coaches and going through those evaluations of all the programs. Just to let you know, one of the things, one of the only programs that we haven't really gotten a complete end of the season on is hockey because we deal with all the different schools in the club. So what we're looking at right now is we want to do an analysis of it to make sure that the levy rent for the ice is appropriate for what we're doing, we have never had an increase in that since we've been doing that, and like everything else, the expense is not, not the same as it was 10 or 15 years ago either, so there may be an adjustment on, on that coming up. Just actually today I finalized all of the baseball schedule changes for the varsity games, we'll be playing 10 home games this year, three of them in Regal, three of them in Lake Henry, and four of them in Roscoe, and then we'll, that'll all change once it snows or rains on those days, but, but we've pretty much completed all that, so as far as the conference, since I've been the AD here, we have never had any conference dues, we've always made enough money with conference events that we've run in order to waive conference dues, which are $500 per year per school, which is a great deal for our school, it gets us a conference schedule plus the ability for all of the activities that are conference-sponsored, opportunity to, for our students to earn conference championships as a team or individuals to be out conference. We may next year have to pay dues just because of the, some of the expenses that our conference has had such as bad weather around some events and different things being canceled that used to cause revenue. That's not necessarily the ordinary, I know some schools when they join certain conferences around us, it's $3,000 a year to be part of a conference, and ours, our dues are $500 a year, but we have not paid them in the past. Yesterday I had another meeting for area schools for the district football thing that has now become a little bit more clear as far as the timeline, they're announcing each school has to fill in a survey of what your current schedule is, who would be your top three prioritized opponents if you could keep them on your schedule, and what your records and stuff like that have been recently, so they're hopes to put those schedules together based on, trying to put like programs together. Timeframe of those being released is probably gonna be in June to the public, and... Timeframe of those being released is probably going to be in June to the public and to anybody other than people that work on those committees. Other than that, working on some stuff either for the capital or for the facilities and you guys come in here and hear from the students as far as things that they talk about and getting some quotes for some padding upgraded in the high school gymnasium. If you've been in there, you see the threats floating in the air when people run up by them. I don't know if they've ever been replaced since the school's been built, but it's time for some of that stuff and it does cost money unfortunately. But we're looking at that as well as getting some, the banners have never been updated since I've been here and simply there's just not a lot of money to do that. But we want to upgrade those banners and create a much more streamlined system where there'd be a banner for each activity instead of a banner for each year event because eventually you run out of wall space. And that's typical to what a lot of schools are doing right now. So does anybody have any questions for me on anything? Or softball and track practices began this past Monday with golf and baseball starting next Monday for our spring sports.
And also those golf balls?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a tentative date of course, but actually we've, we've had a lot of snow melt these past couple of days. The first week of April, maybe it is April 1st, I have to look at the calendars, our first scheduled event. I don't, I don't be pushing it, but if we don't get much more snow, I do think that there's a good opportunity for early spring. It's just going to depend on the type of weather we get from here on out.
Hope you're right, Max.
Where will baseball be practicing?
At the varsity field here, yeah. So then we'll do so without a backstop. So we'll either get really good at hitting the ball, maybe we'll get really good at catching or we'll get good exercise, but there will be no backstop behind home play. And to my knowledge, they won't be doing any of their construction work while they're out there practicing. It's going to be muddy where those berms and stuff are, just fall balls and stuff go there. And then the JV and that's great, we use the JV and that's great fields. JV will still play on the JV field and at the school here, the ninth graders play at the elementary school. So it's just the varsity team. And truthfully, there's a lot of districts like Bold High School, for instance, they play in Bird Island at a community or a town facility. We play Albany, we'll play at Avon. There's a lot of high schools that use a city field. We don't have a city field here, we have the school field that the city uses. But that's, it's not out of the norm for schools to not necessarily have the facility right there. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list would be technology committee report.
Well, we've kind of hit on it already with some of the stuff that we're dealing with. And then there's going to be more, obviously, as we go forward with any other improvements, I would say, you know, with our, our computers that we have, we usually run a three-year timeframe. So those all, us committee is going to have to still come back with some recommendations on what is it that we really need first of all, and then kind of put a plan together and then present that to the board.
We're also working on this technology, five-year plan or three-year plan, however we look forward. Five-year plan is to be quite ways in the future because technology changes so much. But we're, it's, it's time to re, relook at that and redo the strategic plan in regards to technology too. And that will help us as we go on with strategic planning for the whole district, we'll have that kind of in place and update.
Okay. Anything else? Next then would be policy report. This is policy committee report. Cheryl?
I apologize, I left my notes at home. To begin in.
I can kind of fill in a little bit. I think we're, we looked at two policies. One is the food service policy that certainly seems to be a very hot topic now. In fact, I met with the food, some representatives from food service department, my two principals today, and we had some discussion with that. I haven't had a chance to type it up, but we're kind of in a place where we'll make some changes to the policy and we'll be bringing that forward to the policy committee itself for more discussion. And then we also talked about facility piece with that. Are we going to leave it the same? Are we going to charge any additional fees? Are we or aren't we? What are we going to do? I think this is a good time to talk about that with the new stadium project in the works. So those were the two main things that we had talked about and we'll be meeting again.
Okay. Next then would be the facility meeting, which is mine. We had a facility meeting, let's see, last week, and it was very interesting. We have, our superintendent selected out a number of people that he just added to our committee. So we have from the public, we have three of the board members, which is Deb and myself and Luke. So, but I thought it was very interesting. We had a lot of discussion. We had people come from the public that had some input on that and it was very interesting. We were just laying the groundwork, if I can speak for Bob there, just so everybody was kind of on the same page. At our next meeting, we hope to start getting reports and move forward.
In fact, this should have an update. Garland is able to come to our next facility meeting. I'd sent out an email to that today. That says it'll be on the 27th at 6:30 in the same location, which would be the middle school media center. And again, Garland has presented to the board. One's already, I do want the facility committee to see that presentation. So they'll be providing information on, on the rules at that next meeting.
Yeah, and I might just add a little bit. There were some interesting things that took place at the facility meeting, one of which was about the committee. And I believe from here on out, the committee information will be handled by the board. The committee that we have was not involved in putting this together. The board was involved through our superintendent. So that will be one of the items. And the second item is, there's some discussion about who can attend. As we get into some of the facilities, we have other members of our school board that are interested in maybe attending and listening. So we are still working on that. We have a go-ahead from the Minnesota School Board Association, but we want to work that out to make sure there's nothing of, out of place for open meetings and all the rest of that. But curiosity from everybody is kind of there because I think it will, we have a lot of things to discuss that as everybody here is well aware of. Any questions on anything? Next is continuing education report. Kellin?
We met today and actually left a little early for the, we're done. Kind of a working meeting. Takes a continuing education from the staff, I don't know, sort of an opening. She has a list of those that are due this year for renewal. One thing that Mrs. Bikers heard about, another district is doing a lot of this paperwork online. She's going to learn more about it because people paperless, so everybody was kind of excited about that. So she's going to give that. That's about it.
Good. Then next will be custodial negotiations. David?
Okay. Both custodial and pair negotiations are proceeding. I think we're going to hope to bring out contract for next meeting.
The pair is, I think, is a question mark at this time. There's that one issue and I've got to get that out hopefully to the pairs tomorrow after our board, our committee discussion right at the end. I, the custodians voted today and my understanding is that it did pass, so we'll just get the paper copies and stuff already and that will be at the board meeting next, at the next agenda for you.
Okay, so we just covered nine and 10.
Yes.
Number 11 then would be administrative meeting report.
Okay, just to fill the board in, being some negotiations, the teachers now have the paperwork in their hands with the completed changes to the contract. They'll be looking at that, that's my hope that that will also come to the board next week. But right now they do have all the changes, they have copies of it, so they need to look at it, make sure that we're all in agreement. Then I would assume that they would vote on, on that itself and then it would possibly come to the board. So we just need to wait for the union representation to make sure that everything is as, as we agreed before they take that to the membership. I wish I did not have to talk about this at every meeting, snow days. We've now hit our sixth snow day. The, the license staff has come up with a pretty interesting proposal that they needed to work with through a membership. I'm going to support their proposal. Right now they are willing to take their end of the quarter break. The next one, I think it's on March 24th if I'm not mistaken, and use that as a student contact date. That, I think, is a great thing that we could bring students in at a time when it's, it's a good time for them to be in. Now, I can't say that my students are going to be real excited to come in on that date. We need to let parents know because that was not one of the snow makeup days. But again, because of the timing of this and just the fact that we've got so many days off, I would recommend to the board that we use the 24th as a student contact date. Now, in exchange for that, you have to remember that, that's the day that they get all their grades in and a number of other things that they have to get done. I'm not going to add another date, we'll just move that down the road. So that will count for one of those student makeup days. So to remind everybody, right now on March 25th, it was an in-service date. We're going to move that to the end of the year on June 2nd. And then by adding that, that would be one of the student makeup days, right? On April 21st, Monday after Christmas, that's another day that would be made up.
Easter.
Sorry, Easter, Easter, I see Christmas, yeah, April, I'm moving it. Yep, that's right. I'm going to make a change. Here, the, so Easter Monday will be a student makeup date. And that is again, just in addition because that was not on our calendar, but it was a snow makeup day. On May, I think, 30th, the last day of May of that week, that Friday, was a teacher workshop day. We're moving that to the 3rd of June. And that becomes another makeup day. So that's the third student makeup day. Now, if we add March 24th, that would be the fourth student makeup day out of, out of six days. And at this time, my recommendation, and I believe I will stick with this all the way through, we have a number of things that we need to get done with our staff. I would like to use that, those last two days for just staff alone, to get some things done that are important for the, the schools to get done. So my recommendation is that we make up the four student contact days. The last two days aren't made up by students at this time, but they will be made up by staff. That could be in a number of different ways, from staff development opportunities after school to just a number of things. I'll leave that in the hands of the principal on what they believe is best for their staff itself. Now, the only thing that would possibly change this, my recommendation to the board on this at all, would be if we have another snow makeup day. And if we did that, that one may go to June 2nd and then we just move the, the staff work day and the staff workshop day down in that week. I'm hoping I don't have to bring this forward to the board again. That's my recommendation to the board. If there's no issues with that, that's the way I'm going to proceed. I, I really think for the opportunity for us to get another student contact date, particularly at that time of year, is just so beneficial to our students. So I really do thank them for coming up with that idea and willing to give it a try for the student.
Do you correlate that with, for the ALC and Beacon program or?
We'll have to check with that and see how they are. Every school's doing a different, some don't have those days on their calendar as it is, so most likely, although I didn't check with.
Well, they, they, they have taken the 25th. They are, they are going to use the 25th as one of their makeup days.
Yeah, so we'll, we will correlate with them or coordinate with them. If they're, I mean, if they're in session, we're sending our students. If they're not in session, then there's nothing to send our students.
Bring that up Monday night?
Yes, we certainly could. But really, the principals themselves are really working on that, so I, I don't, I don't foresee any issues. If they're in session, we'll send our students. If they're not in session, we won't send our students. Any questions on that? Another one of my favorite topics, budget. Over the course of the next number of meetings, the board is going to get an awful lot of information on it. I'm forewarning the board, right now my number that I'm looking at for budget reductions for next year is going to be $300,000. All right? You'll be getting more information as we go on this road. The next meeting, you'll get some more information. The meeting after that, there are certain timelines that we do need to, to adhere to and we will adhere to those timelines, but we'll be discussing that at future meetings. I just wanted to give the board a heads up. I certainly have talked with you individually that, you know, I'd be bringing this forward. So I'm just bringing it at this particular meeting. We have a community meeting set on Thursday, 8 o'clock to hear concerns about the stadium project and the selling of the 3-2 beer issue. I think I did send some information on the lease piece itself to you, an email, just to fill in the community with that, is that our, our current attorney does have some concerns about whether we can lease to the baseball association itself, and I have not been able to get ahold of our attorney and we're playing phone tag, or whether we need to lease to the city first and then they can lease to the baseball association. But before, of course, this comes to any kind of decision by the board, that will be very clear to the community and everybody else on how that would need to take place. But that is 8 o'clock again. It's in the seminar room right here and we'll allow the community to give us some input on that. I think that is all I have.
Okay. Do we have other sharing, anything else from anybody? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn? Put my Deb, second by the, the other votes? In all its favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, say no.